Also stand in session, items one, two, seven, and eight are executive sessions. And direction to staff, Mr. Clerk.
Your Honor, the first executive session is noticed as item one, executive session, City of Tucson versus Skerrill and Stoll Investments LLC et al., Pima County Superior Court, case number C-20174866. It is being held pursuant to ARS section 38-431.03a, 3, a 4, and day 7. The second executive session is noticed as item 7, executive session Edwards versus City of Tucson et al., Pima County Superior Court, case number C-20183529. It is being held pursuant to ARS section 38-431.03a, 3, and day 4.
I may have motioned to go into executive session? Yeah, motion, and second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, let's do it.[66.89]
We're back in study session. What is the council's pleasure for item two? I think that's the council member, Romero.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, in City of Tucson versus Skuro and Stoll Investments, I would appreciate a motion to proceed as discussed in executive session in order to resolve this property acquisition case.
So move. Got a motion in second on the Skuro matter to proceed as discussed in executive session. Any other discussion on that matter? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, then let's go over to item eight, which would be council member Romero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that mayor and council direct the city attorney to proceed as discussed in executive session, and that we authorize and approve the settlement of all claims in this matter for the total amount of $215,000.
Second. Motion second on that, is there any discussion on that matter? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that matter passes. Let's move on to item three, the transit management contract scheduled for 30 minutes. Staff has an update on the RFP process for the Transit Management Services contract. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this should be fairly brief. It's really just an update on direction you'd provided some time ago with regard to the transit management contract. There was a lot of discussion some time ago, particularly after the strike, and we've been through some iterations. I wanted to make sure that you were well-versed in how we address some of your concerns and some of the comments we receive from the public. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sam Credeo, who can kind of walk you through a little background without getting too long-winded on this.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would like to provide you with a brief history regarding the performance indicators included in the Transit System Management Services request for proposals, as well as a brief update on the selection process. In late 2016, a city manager's transit stakeholders group was formed. Per your direction, the group was comprised of community members, regional partners, and transit professionals. In part, this group was asked to provide input on the city's current transit management contract, and more specifically, they were asked what contract incentives might increase ridership and improve overall operation of the system. Through this process, the stakeholder group found that the performance indicators included in the current transit management contract did not adequately meet the goals of increasing ridership. And furthermore, the existing performance indicators did not provide incentive for the contractor to provide excellent service to our customers. A report with final recommendations dated January 6, 2017, was submitted to the city manager, and the recommendations included modifying the performance indicators to include incentives for ridership, customer satisfaction, and maintenance. Overall, it was recommended that the contract performance indicators should be established and tracked using the following guidelines. The contractor should have the ability to largely control the performance indicator. The indicator should be easily tracked and analyzed. Performance goals for each indicator should be realistic and achievable. Incentives for exceeding performance goals should be balanced with disincentives for not achieving goals. And lastly, the city or an independent third party should periodically verify the contractor's performance data to ensure the integrity of the process. In March of that same year, mayor and council directed staff to combine the contracts for transit management for Suntran, Sunvan, and Sunlink, and to include the performance indicators consistent with the stakeholders' group recommendations in the new contract. In April of last year, the request for proposals was published, which included performance indicators that reflect both incentives and disincentives.
You mean a motion to return to stay session?
No move.
We got a motion second to return to stay session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, we're back in study session. What is the council's pleasure for item two? I think that's the council member Romero.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, in City of Tucson versus Skuro and Stoll Investments, I would appreciate a motion to proceed as discussed in executive session in order to resolve this property acquisition case.
So move.
Got a motion as second on the Skuro matter to proceed as discussed in executive session. Any other discussion on that matter? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, then let's go over to item eight, which would be council member Romero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that mayor and council direct the city attorney to proceed as discussed in executive session and that we authorize and approve the settlement of all claims in this matter for the total amount of $215,000.
Second.
Motion second on that. Is there any discussion on that matter? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that matter passes. Let's move on to item three, the transit management contract scheduled for 30 minutes. Staff has an update on the RFP process for the Transit Management Services contract. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this should be fairly brief. It's really just an update on direction you'd provided some time ago with regard to the transit management contract. There was a lot of discussion some time ago, particularly after the strike, and we've been through some iterations. I wanted to make sure that you were well-versed in how we address some of your concerns and some of the comments we receive from the public. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sam Creedio, who can kind of walk you through a little background without getting too long-winded on this.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would like to provide you with a brief history regarding the performance indicators included in the Transit System Management Services request for proposals, as well as a brief update on the selection process. In late 2016, a city manager's transit stakeholders group was formed. Per your direction, the group was comprised of community members, regional partners, and transit professionals. In part, this group was asked to provide input on the city's current transit management contract, and more specifically, they were asked what contract incentives might increase ridership and improve overall operation of the system. Through this process, the stakeholder group found that the performance indicators included in the current transit management contract did not adequately meet the goals of increasing ridership. And furthermore, the existing performance indicators did not provide incentive for the contractor to provide excellent service to our customers. A report with final recommendations dated January 6, 2017, was submitted to the city manager, and the recommendations included modifying the performance indicators to include incentives for ridership, customer satisfaction, and maintenance. Overall, it was recommended that the contract performance indicators should be established and tracked using the following guidelines. The contractor should have the ability to largely control the performance indicator. The indicator should be easily tracked and analyzed. Performance goals for each indicator should be realistic and achievable. Incentives for exceeding performance goals should be balanced with disincentives for not achieving goals. And lastly, the city or an independent third party should periodically verify the contractor's performance data to ensure the integrity of the process. In March of that same year, mayor and council directed staff to combine the contracts for transit management for Suntran, Sunvan, and Sunlink, and to include the performance indicators consistent with the stakeholders' group recommendations in the new contract. In April of last year, the request for proposals was published, which included performance indicators that reflect both incentives and disincentives, consistent with your direction, and this includes on-time performance, passenger complaints, and preventable accidents, just to name a few. Lastly, the scope of work also included an annual ridership incentive. The contractor will receive an incentive for each 1% increase in ridership annually. This has been included as a way to incentivize the contractor to grow ridership on an annual basis. The RFP selection committee has spent the last several months performing a comprehensive review of the proposals received for the Transit Management Services contract, and the committee is prepared to finalize the selection process and issue a notice of intent to award in the coming months. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Councilmember Durham?
What has been the history on the traffic citations under the current contract? And I've got a second question.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Durham, I don't have that history directly in front of me, but what I can tell you is that we do track that on a monthly basis, and I'd be able to go back and get that to you and be able to provide that to mayor and council exactly. But we do track that on a monthly basis, and in the current contract, the way it's structured is that any citation is an actual, we do charge the contractor for that, and the way that the new RFP is written, that's going to remain the same.
$750 per citation.
That's correct.
On the increase in ridership benefit incentive, as population increases in Tucson, wouldn't that contribute to increase in ridership even if the contractor does nothing?
That is correct. And so, for that reason, at the beginning of the year when we're forecasting our ridership, we do have to establish a baseline ridership based on factors like you just mentioned. And then, looking at that baseline ridership is how we would establish whether or not the contractor had increased the ridership for that year. So if the contractor projects a specific number for that baseline ridership for the upcoming year, and then exceeds that by 1%, for each 1%, that's how the incentive would be paid out, not just strictly on, you know, something happens, for example, you know, perhaps gas goes through the roof, $10 a gallon, and so now all of a sudden, everybody's riding the bus and ridership goes up. We do have to account for that. The goal here is to incentivize the contractor to make significant changes that would increase ridership on an annual basis. So we would look at it before the fiscal year, and then look at it, you know, looking back and see where ridership's at.
Councilmember Romero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Talk to us about the finances. What's the amount of the contract that we're giving RATP?
So, right now, the City of Tucson currently pays about $1.2 million for the overall management of Suntran, Sunvan, and Sunlink. We don't know exactly what the final number will be for the new RFP because we haven't completed that process yet. Once that process is completed and the contract is signed, then that will be made public to everyone, and you'll be able to see exactly what the fee is. But really, the idea is that by consolidating all three together, that we would see a reduced management fee.
So, right now, we pay for all three transit services, $1.2 million?
That is correct, about there. I can get you a more accurate number.
Are you thinking that the contract would be less because of the cost savings in terms of using the same staff, or what is it that you're thinking?
That's an excellent question. One thing to point out is that the way that we've structured the new contract is that we're actually eliminating a position. If you recall, Suntran and Sunvan had one general manager, Sunlink had one general manager. By combining all three under one contract, we only have one general manager, and so that in itself saves money. Really, the management fee is just paying the salaries of the management company individuals plus, you know, the insurance and things of that nature. So, that's really all we're paying for, and so by reducing that person and then also just having the consolidation of all three under one would save money.
So is RATP going to consolidate the employees from the previous management company that we had with theirs?
So, one thing I can tell you-
Or are those people being laid off?
So-
I don't know, I'm just asking.
That's a fair question, and some of the details of that I can't share because it's still in an open procurement. The, I can tell you that the way that the scope of work was structured is that we would have one general manager, and that each mode, Suntran, Sunvan, and Sunlink, would each have an assistant general manager. And so, we spelled that out very clearly in the RFP, and that is how we expected the management companies who were bidding on this to propose on this contract.
Talk to us a little bit more about, is, are we defining the way we'd like for the company to increase ridership? Are they giving us an idea as to how they're going to do that?
So, one thing that we requested in this RFP is we really wanted to see companies come to the table with innovative ideas, to bring solutions that perhaps are working in other areas that could be applied here. We want them to think creatively and think outside the box, understanding that we do have some performance indicators as well. And the performance indicators were actually structured in a way to also help increase ridership, as I mentioned. What we're focusing on really is customer satisfaction, and we're focusing on the reliability of the system and providing a good quality system to the customer. And that in itself has proven to increase ridership, and so that's why we felt very strongly to include these performance incentives, because what we're going to do is actually reward the contractor for performing at a very high level. And on the other side of it, if they're not performing, then we're going to, you know, retain some of that money, get some of that money back, because we do have high expectations, and so-
So, talk to us about that. Can you talk to us about what the financial gain would be for the management company if you put all of the incentives together and say, you know, they meet all of these performance metrics? What is the amount of money that the company would receive from the City of Tucson?
So, this table is included in your material, I believe it's the second attachment, and we actually have a system summary. And the way that we've structured it is that the contractor can make a monthly maximum total of $5,500, which comes out to a total of $66,000 annually, if they exceeded every single performance indicator within the contract. On the other side of that, if they didn't hit every single, in fact, if they failed miserably, they would actually lose $120,000 off the contract. And now, one thing I can tell you is that these management contracts are not very lucrative. If, if right now, we're paying $1.2 million, about 10% of that is their profit. So basically, what we're saying here is that if they missed all of their performance goals completely, and we were to initiate these disincentives, they would likely not make any profit for that year. Now, with the ridership bonus, that one's not a monthly bonus, that's an annual bonus. And the way that we've structured that is that they can make up to $110,000 annually. What we've done is we've put a cap on how much we would pay them for the ridership bonus. It's a 1% increase. For every 1%, they get a bonus up to 10%. And at that, we would cap it. Now, obviously, we would love to see a 15% or 20% increase, and that's great, but we don't want to, we had to cost-control this a little bit, and so that's what we're looking at with the annual ridership bonus.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fameris?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This model that you're showing us, is this unique to the City of Tucson, or you've taken some of this from other cities in the country? Sam?
So, it is somewhat unique in terms of the way that we've structured it. Other agencies do have performance metrics that they have on their contractors. Other agencies utilize a different model for delivering transit. The management model is one that is popular, and a lot of times, in fact, in our current contract, there are some performance metrics, but there are only disincentives, there's no incentives. And so, you know, these really give the contractor a, an extra step to perform at a high level. So, it's somewhat unique, but understanding that there are performance metrics that have been used in other agencies as well.
Now, you're talking about limiting the general manager's supervisory position and combining this. Are we looking at the same thing for the advertising contracts? Because it seems like we have four different contracts out there for the Sunlink, Sunvan, Suntran, and for the bus shelters. Are we also looking at that aspect and trying to combine some of these to get a better bang for us, and then not limit it to like 30-year contracts, or that we seem to have lately?
So, one thing we are looking at is both of those contracts you mentioned for advertising on the vehicles, as well as on the bus stops, have different expiration dates, and obviously, we do see an advantage in having a consolidation of contracts, and so that is something that as we move forward, we are going to look at.
Good. Now, the other question is, how does the bus rider file a complaint? We're talking about complaints, how does, what does, explain that process to me, and then do bus drivers have a process to file in also?
So, customers can always contact Suntran Customer Service and file a complaint, and every month, staff meets with Suntran to review the monthly operations report, and with this new structure, we're going to have to review these monthly performance indicators to make sure, to see whether or not there's going to be an incentive or disincentive for that month or a goal. And part of that involves reviewing the customer service log that we have and assuring the validity of those complaints. And so, that's one thing that we do review on a monthly basis. The other question you asked was the mechanism for bus drivers to be able to file a complaint. And I believe that they have an internal structure in which they work through with their supervisors, as well as their labor union, to be able to file complaints.
And I know, last year or the year and a half before, we talked about office of driver safety, and we were putting partitions up and looking at some other factors that there were there, and also the mold at one of the centers. Has that been all taken care of, mitigated?
Yes, sir. We have continued to retrofit buses with the barriers, as well as new buses that are coming in, are being delivered with the barriers as well.
Have we seen a reduction in incidents that have occurred? Have you been following that or tracking it?
Oh, we do track that, and we can certainly get that information in terms of incidents and get that back to you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Durham, and then Scott, Paul, you had your hand up again, didn't you? Okay, then we'll go to Shirley and back to Paul.
So, is the baseline ridership forecast included in the annual budget determined on a calendar year basis or a fiscal year?
Right now, since we budget on a fiscal year, that's when we're also looking at our ridership for that upcoming fiscal year as well.
Okay. So, it is still possible that, based on, before the beginning of the fiscal year, you determine the baseline ridership forecast, and if something happens during the fiscal year, if fuel prices start to go up at the end of the first quarter, that could throw things off, right?
That, that's absolutely correct, yes, it could.
Okay. But, I guess we can't think of a better way to solve this problem.
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How many discounts do you offer at this point? Is there a long list of discounts, starting with students and seniors and others? How many total are there? Do you know?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I do know we have several different fare programs. Right now, we are offering the three-day transit pass at a 50% fare for groups that are over 100. In fact, I'm happy to report that the Streetcar Coalition is having a conference here this month, and they're going to participate in that program. So, that's one that we have. We also have the Summer Go Youth Pass, which provides for unlimited rides for youth during the summer. So, we do have a fair bit of fare products that would allow for discounted fares.
And so, the other question is, the more discounts you offer, does that mean more ridership? Is there a relationship there?
I think the answer to that is it depends, and I think that when we're looking at innovative ways to increase ridership and attracting conferences and offering these deals in bulk, bulk discounts, that certainly is an opportunity to increase ridership, and especially when you have a situation like a three-day transit pass, where for three days, you can ride unlimited, it's not just one ride. That one person may generate several rides over the course of several days, so that all plays into the ridership numbers.
Yeah, and the other thing I have to say is, availability of the transit system would make a huge difference in the increase in ridership. Please take note, that would be word four.
Councilmember Kineham, did you have anything on this?
Yeah, I've got it. I wanted to start with, first of all, tell you guys well done on putting together an incentive package that makes sense and tries to rein in some of the management issues we've had with the transit system over the years. That's kind of what we want to do. The main thing that came from questions from different constituents and myself was, I want to be sure that the contractee is not self-reporting to be able to, in other words, I don't want them to have the opportunity to say, oh, look, we have all these riders, and we should get a bonus, and what mechanism do we have in place to be able to audit them, and how much staff time is that going to take? Are we going to have to hire a transit, a transit contract administrator for this? And that was kind of where I was at.
So, as I mentioned, currently, we review performance metrics on a monthly basis. What we're going to have to do is definitely set up some reporting mechanisms moving forward with the new contract that are in line with what we've put into the scope of work. In terms of the additional time to track this, I think what's important to note is that in my opening statement, I mentioned that we have to have the ability to bring in an independent third party if at any point, we feel like we want to audit the contractor and get a third-party opinion. And so, we always have that availability, that opportunity to do so, but in the way that the contract is structured, we believe that our staff that we have now would be the one to verify this, and then if there ever is a question, certainly, we can bring in a third party to review that and make sure that if there is any dispute, that we're verifying.
Well, all I'd ask you is that, when we go through these metrics, and there seems to be a deviation between the actual fare collected and the number of belly buttons that are going through the turnstiles, if we see that deviation at a certain point, it should trigger the audit. So, you probably want to build that in, so they know it's coming, so that they know that if they go over a certain point, and there's a large enough delta between what the expected revenue versus the number of riders, it should just automatically trigger. So, we're not, they know and we know upfront what we're going to do. So, that's kind of my only suggestion. I don't know if that changes the bid process or anything like that, I hope it doesn't, otherwise, it can wait until next cycle, but I just want to keep that in mind.
Okay, Councilmember Romero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to make sure that we are encouraging additional ridership, that we're not concerned as much about, oh my God, if we have more riders, we're going to have to pay this much amount, that we're actively seeking new riders, and I think that's for the benefit of our community, and that we are not afraid of that incentive, but actually work together to make that, that goal, and then some. Because as much as we're incentivizing additional riders, we need to make sure that we're actually working towards that goal and more. And so, actively as a city, and our transportation department, and our transit manager actively looking for ways to get additional passengers into our system is a good thing. We shouldn't be afraid of the incentive that we're going to work with, with the management company on.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Romero, that has been my direction of the staff, and I think that's crystal clear, both in the way that the incentives are structured, as well as, you know, just how we're operating going forward. So, I don't think you have a worry on that.
All right. If there's anything else, we appreciate the update and look forward to seeing the award. All right, thank you. All right, let's move on then to item four, which is state and national legislation. I see Mr. Greenhill is coming forward. Andrew, do we have any state or national legislative updates?
Mayor, we do.
Go ahead. Why don't we start with national?
Sure. Well, uh, but mayor, members of the council, with your permission, a few things. One, I'd like to go through the vice mayor's questions. Second, I'd like to do a quick follow-up on the issue that was brought up last week, having to do with that builder, that spec builder issue with the league, to clarify that a little bit, and then I'll go through the bills. Okay? So, thank you. First, going through some of the vice mayor's questions. The vice mayor asked about efforts to avert another federal government shutdown. As you know, the agreement that was approved by the president and the Congress moved the deadline to February 15th, and have reopened the government, at least until that date. House and senate leaders on both sides of the aisle are talking and negotiating a budget that hopefully will avert a shutdown. Of course, many of us will be watching, the president's- Of course, many of us will be watching the President's and United States of the Union speech to see if there's any guide to whether there could be some breakthrough, especially over this whole issue of border wall funding. Second question had to do with postal reform. I'm happy to announce that the Government Oversight Committee in the House, which is where postal reform would originate, has now organized under the leadership of Congressman Cummings. We have sent a letter over the signatures of the mayor and the vice mayor. We sent that to Congressman Cummings last week at your direction. So they know full well Tucson's interests and priorities when it comes to postal reform. There's no bill yet, but we hope that one will be introduced very soon. Third question had to do with Governor Ducey's veto of tax conformity. Last week, the, both the House and Senate of our Arizona state government passed what's called tax conformity with Senate Bill 1143. What that bill does is it would actually be a lower, a slight lowering of the income tax rate in Arizona. What it's trying to do is adapt for changes that are going to be made in effect, effects of the 2017 Federal Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. In short, the federal tax cut from two years ago, it lowered rates, but it also eliminated some deductions. The state's rates are the same, but the state uses those same deductions. So if those deductions go away, that actually conversely causes a tax, a slight tax increase, or at least an increase in revenues to the state. So there were some leading Republicans in both the House and Senate that said, no, we don't want more revenue, we want a tax cut. So they passed that tax cut on the same day, in fact, that they passed DCP. Sure enough, the next day, the governor vetoed that tax cut. So that's what happened. The governor's veto message, I sent a link to his message. He basically said, this is not a good thing to do when we're trying to figure out how to increase the rainy day fund and make sure we have enough money for the state's priorities. Question four has to do with Pima Community College and what are the investments proposed in the governor's budget? I believe I mentioned this last time, the governor has proposed a $20 million investment in Pima Community College's aviation technology program. It would expand that program. It would help them meet labor demands, according to the governor, of incumbent and new businesses, Bombardier and Ascent, as well as Sky West Airlines. So it's also part of a larger $100 million funding plan that Pima Community College has. So now what happens is that request from the governor goes to the House and Senate Appropriations Committees, and at that point, the legislature will decide if it wants to include that request with the state budget. We'll know that probably in a few months. But we will, of course, support that investment with the appropriations committees. Fifth question had to do with Maricopa Community College. So there's an investment in Pima. What about Maricopa? Yes, the governor proposes about $5.8 million in one-time state investment in Maricopa County Community College to help expand their healthcare specialty programs. So that's, that is also a recommendation from the governor that'll also go through the legislative appropriations process.
So the $20 million is quickly looked in at aviation technology, the growth of that area?
Yes.
With Bombardier and the partnership they had.
Yes.
So that's in Ward five.
Right, exactly. And then the last question from the vice mayor had to do with what other monies might be made available to Pima Community, Pima and Maricopa Community Colleges. There are a couple of bills. One is sponsored by Representative Kano that would appropriate $20.9 million to community colleges across Arizona, including for Pima Community College and Maricopa Community College. As you know, they were zeroed out in recent years. So this would actually get them back into that, hopefully, that regular funding program where they can count on some state funding. There's also another bill that's actually sponsored by another Tucson-area representative, Representative Powers Hanley. That bill also funds Pima and Maricopa County Community Colleges at the same level as Representative Kano's bill, but it does not include funding for other community colleges around the state. I spoke to her about it. She argues that they weren't zeroed out, they don't necessarily need additional funding. Both Representative Kano, Representative Powers Hanley support each other's bills. They don't see them in conflict. And at the last meeting, mayor and council voted to support both bills.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else on the federal matters? If not, let's move on to the state matters. Do you want to start with the speculative builders issue?
Yes. So, Honorable Mayor and council, as you know, at the last meeting, this kind of late item came up, a request by the League of Cities and Towns. And I've been asked by staff to kind of try to give an overview of what the change is about. It is a bit complex. I'll do my best to try to, to try to explain it. I did give out a handout that uses some slides from the league. It's called Spec Builder. So let me try to explain it the way I understand it. So if I bought land, built a building, sold the building, right, I would be subject to what's called a speculative builder tax, right? And that's how we would figure out how the city would get money based upon that sale. It's a complex formula. You'd take the price of what I sold it for, you'd take out some deductions, and then I'd pay a tax based on what's left.
Is that in addition to a capital gain tax?
This is a tax to the city. It's not capital gains, no. It's not, has nothing to do with federal.
And we've been, and we've been imposing this tax?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's called a spec builder tax. I built the building on spec, meaning I didn't know exactly where it would.
Got it.
Right, okay. So the question comes down to those deductions, right? So there's, there's a description on that first page of what deductions are already in statute that you deduct from the price of the, of the building, and then whatever's left, again, you pay the tax. There's an option, or actually, there's two options in the Model City Tax Code that allow for land deductions on that same transaction or on that same, you know, sale. So they're what's called Option M as in Mary, Option N as in Nancy. That's just how they're categorized in the Model City Tax Code. Basically, Option M is, it allows cities to deduct the cost of the land from that price, right? So it's an extra deduction. It means if you allow that deduction, the builder would pay less tax, right? Right now, there are five cities in Arizona that do Option M, including Tucson, okay? Option N allow, also allows for a land deduction, but that deduction is based upon the fair market value of the land. That is usually higher than the cost of the land, and there's a safe harbor provision which calculates it right around 20%. So the 20% of, you can get another 20% write-off or deduction if you allow for Option N. There are 17 cities in Arizona that allow for Option N. So here's the thing. The league has contacted the city and said, hey, Tucson, you're one of five cities that do Option M. The other four leave in. They are, they're actually going to not even go to Option N, they are not going to do any deductions anymore. So of the 91 cities and towns in Arizona, Tucson would be the one left in Option M. And so in this big effort connected to Wayfair, where we're trying to consolidate the Model City Tax Code, the request has come to Tucson to say, do you want to move to Option N? Or maybe even not do either option and not do any deduction?
Have we calculated what the cost will be if we go from M to N?
Yes. So, and I'll get to your question in a second, just to show you on page, so page two explains what I just explained to you. Page three gives you a sense of the revenues of cities across the state that they're collecting from the spec builder tax, ranges from about $4.8 billion in Phoenix to $49 in Carefree, right? You can see Tucson, last fiscal year, or at least fiscal year 18, collected $1.1 million from this tax. And again, that, that includes the deduction that we already give. On the last page, I've shown you the five cities that are M with us, and the ones with the asterisks next to them are the ones that are pulling out altogether from giving any land deduction. And then there's the 17 cities that are N cities, according to the league, and I checked with them this afternoon just to get the latest, the ones with the, with the asterisks are ones that have announced that they are going to no deduction as well. So, and then to get to your question, Mayor, what City Finance has told me is if we go to N from M, that would mean about $100,000 a year loss to the city from revenues, okay? Again, we'd be giving a larger deduction. If we went to no deduction, that would be a revenue increase of about $202,000. And that's based on last year's revenues.
So why wouldn't we go to no deduction?
So the choice in front of the council is basically that, N or nothing, I mean, no deduction. You know, when I talked with the city manager's office earlier today, you know, we're certainly prepared to get a direction from you, if you like. I don't, not sure we necessarily need to do it today. There are other things that may be happening with the tax code that may also affect revenues. But bottom line, at least the choice that's in front of us is this one.
But it looks like the larger cities, or the cities I would probably compare us to, Phoenix, Mace, even Oro Valley, which has a pretty good number, are all at no deduction.
That's right.
So that would seem to be the more reasonable course.
Yes, you look at the 22 cities listed here, Tucson sticks out.
Right. So it looks like the, what I'll call the larger cities, in fact, yeah, all the larger cities are at no deduction. That makes it pretty easy, doesn't it?
So if, if you, we have to give an answer to the League of Cities and Towns?
Probably not today, but it doesn't seem like
Hard.
That difficult if we bring ourselves into compliance. So the concern was, we're trying to get to Wayfair, we're sort of out there on our own with whatever we were before, but if we go this way or the other way, we're good with Wayfair. If we go to the no deduction, we're actually in
Better space.
A better space, both for our revenue and also for the cities that are in our region that we, people would choose to build in, so.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one additional question, maybe you could, just so that we reiterate, because I think it would be a good idea to make a decision today if, you know.
Sure.
Explain to us again, Andrew, about the deduct, the option N and then the no deduction.
Sure.
And how that impacts the, the revenue coming in the city.
Sure. So, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Romero. So again, in this, in this situation where someone builds a building, sells it, and is going to pay this tax to the city, there's already a number of deductions that they take. Cities across Arizona, under the tax code, have an option. And the option is, do you want to deduct the land value as well as these other standard deductions? And it's an option. You can do it, you cannot. If we do that option, then it's a loss, it's a loss of revenue to the city. And again, City Finance calculates that if we were to change from M to N, based on this year's revenues, it would be about a $100,000 loss to the city. If we decided, you know what, we don't want to do any deduction. And again, as the mayor said, to put us in line with other cities our size and most of the cities in our region, that would actually realize for the city, based on last year's numbers, an increase in revenue for about $200,000.
I'd like to have us consider that the city of Tucson choose the no deduction option as Oro Valley and Phoenix and Chandler and other, other cities around the state that are comparable to the city of Tucson. So I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Get a second on that? We got a second? Well, I'm going to go to, we got just for purpose of discussion, we have a motion. A second, Councilmember Kozachek.
Is this a policy decision or somebody asking, or we have to, do we have to ask somebody for permission to do this? I mean, we're
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Kozachek.
You keep mentioning League of Cities and Towns.
Right.
Do we have to ask their permission to do this? Or is this an internal policy decision?
Oh, yeah. No, this is a policy decision of the mayor and council.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Durham and Councilmember Ferber.
Would there be any city of any size in southern Arizona with, with an N deduction?
Safford, Wilcox, I guess we can
I think the question was if any size.
So, you know, it's relative, I suppose, yeah. Yeah, and when I spoke to the league today, in the cities that are N's, and you can see there are four, three or four that have announced that they are not going to give any more deductions at all, even though N will still be an option for them. And what the league, the person I spoke to at the league told me is, he said he expects more cities to drop out as well.
Yeah, makes sense. Councilmember Ferber.
I was going to ask, what's the timeframe that we're working under? You said that there's none, and then where is this in the legislature? Is this a bill being looked at or?
So, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Vice Mayor Ferber, no, there's no bill at the legislature, right? So the way, and I know we got this question last time, the Model City Tax Code is established by the legislature, but it was established so that cities don't have to go to the legislature to get approval for our taxes. It was something cities stood pretty strongly on back in the 80s when this was established.
But in this, but in this case, it sounds like that commission is saying, we just need you guys to let us know what you're doing and we'll put it in?
Yes.
Okay.
So the motion is to not do any deduction?
To do no, to
Go onto no deduction is what the motion was.
Right.
And that will be for the betterment of the city and the
By a couple hundred thousand.
A couple hundred thousand, okay.
Sure. All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion on that matter? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Excellent. Okay, thank you, Andrew. What other businesses the state legislature up to?
So I've submitted my list of bills to the mayor and council. There are a number of bills on the list. I'm happy to answer any questions about them or about anything else going on at the legislature.
I don't know if everybody's had the opportunity to review the bills and the recommendations. They looked, unless somebody has questions, questions, yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Romero.
Talk to us about the landlord-tenant state preemption
Sure.
And the judges, the municipal judges' terms and retention elections.
Sure. I'll start with the landlord-tenant one. So, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Romero, House Bill 2115, landlord-tenant state preemption. This is a bill that's being proposed by the Arizona Multi-Housing Association. And what they're trying to do is basically preempt the ability of cities to regulate landlord-tenant relations. That would include preempting our ability to regulate health and safety conditions in rentals, as well as, and I've talked at length, by the way, with the city of Tempe and the city of Phoenix about this, we believe that it would preempt our ability to enforce nondiscrimination ordinances as well. So those cities of, the Arizona Multi-Housing Association. Now, one thing that has gotten some folks tripped up, and again, I've had some conversations at length with my colleagues up in the Phoenix Valley about this, there was an amendment that was added to the bill in committee, and what the amendment does, or at least the proponents of the, of the amendment said, okay, well, we'll just lock in whatever regulations you have now and we'll preempt you prospectively.
Sorry, Dan.
But the problem is, and I agree with this reading, both Tempe and I believe that all they've really done is, is delay the effectiveness date. They haven't necessarily made it so that regulations that are in place now are protected, even if we were open to that, which I would still recommend opposition. But it really just says that the full preemption would go into effect at a slightly later date.
Well, your recommendations oppose.
Yes.
So tell us about municipal judges and electing them.
Sure. So, mayor and council may remember, a couple of years ago, there was a report by the Goldwater Institute that tried to, in their mind, expose what they said is happening in municipal courts around the state. And just to put it bluntly and in as short of words as possible, they, you know, they tried to argue that cities use municipal courts as cash registers, and we try to, you know, put in lots of fines and fees and, and we use them to, for revenue purposes. So they came out with a number of recommendations to try to alleviate that situation. Cities, together with the league, argued back and said, no, all your methodology is wrong. In fact, these are heavily subsidized operations, and sorry, but you're wrong. So that hasn't stopped certain people who still believe in the conclusions of the report. This bill, I believe, stems from those who want to try to put some checks into how cities operate their courts, and in this case, it's to try to move from appointed magistrates to elected magistrates. I guess, I guess the assumption is that if they're elected, they're less likely to assess fines and fees because they want to get elected.
And your recommendation is to oppose that, is
Yes, this preempts the city of Tucson's ordinance, I believe, our charter. Yes, preempts our charter. I recommend opposition.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to adopt Mr. Greenhill's recommendations.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to adopt the recommendations from Mr. Greenhill. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, anyone oppose? All right, thank you. Good job, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We only have a couple items on a consent agenda. Anything to be removed this evening?
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Hearing none. Make sure Councilmember Cunningham's not removing anything from consent agenda. No. Excellent. Anything for future agendas at this time? If not, we will adjourn and be back at 5:30. Thank you. Thank you.